I'd like to call the meeting to order July 20th, 2022. Do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeguiled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. Warrants and bills have all been signed. Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, motion passes. Minutes of the last meeting, why don't we hold on this until Jennifer returns, okay? Not sure if she has minutes for today or not.
Yeah.
For the last meeting. Department head committee chair updates. Any department head or chair reports to come forward?
Jason, that too.
All right, I just wanted to do a quick little overview of what I've been working on for the town with the permitting. A second. All right, so looking to do, to start going online here so that people can process their permits, send in their applications, file complaints or inquiries. That's for the residents of Acton and anybody, contractors that are around here. So just a brief overview here, is there, this is what the portal will look like when you, when it's, when it's online on our website, on the code enforcement dropdown. So you'll be able to go on here and look at existing permits quickly and then, so you had one that's going on right now, if you didn't know the certain name, this is a full house that's going on in the area. Oops, let's go back. So this is what you'd be able to see if an Acton resident or somebody would want to know if there's a certain permit on a parcel. You would see, you know, construct a 100 by 43 ranch with attached garage and covered deck. You can go through it, see the inspections, what have been done, what's been completed, who did the inspection, things like that. So this one particularly gets framing, foundation, footing. It's got a couple, another, there's a foundation drainage, things like that. You go back to the portal. You can, they'll be able to do a building application, permit application, plumbing application, conditional use, all these, all these different things. So if, you know, you quickly go on, this gives you just, they'll just fill out that information and it'll get sent into me as a regular application that you would see that people are filling out right now for paper. This also has the ability to, a second, I've got things in my way here. So for my department, you would go in. This would be what, you know, you see from my side, so you get to put in all this information. That comes from the application, it goes in there, you schedule all these, these things. This gives you your fees, if it's paid, unpaid. Who's the contractor doing it as well, these are your inspections. So when you do an inspection, this is one of the really nice things about this program, is you go into your framing inspection, this is, obviously it's pending, it hasn't been, hasn't gone through. But as a code officer, you go in and you're looking for certain things. This gives you the ability to, this tells you a couple key points, you know, what you're looking for throughout the building inspection. And you, you pass it, fail it, or you say it's not applicable. So that's a really nice feature.
Is that like a checklist?
Yes. Very much so. And that goes through everything, so, you know, your insulation, you're doing the same thing. Prior, you know, they want to make sure that it meets all its R values. Foundation drainage, septic systems, you've got the two inspections that go with that. This is what the permit will look like, that comes from, that, this is what the applicant gets when they are issued a permit. This shows you, so this, this is showing what's already been inspected. Right now, it says pass, pass, pending, you know, if it's something failed and then you, you can actually create, in the inspection, a comment of why it failed or what they need to do. And so that's, that's what a permit will look like through the new program.
If, if something failed, does it communicate to the resident?
This program does. This program doesn't, but I do.
You do, I see.
Yeah, no, that is my, that is my job to inform them.
It's not an automatic.
That is my job to inform them that something had failed and it needs to be corrected. And then we go back out for reinspection.
Those fees that you listed, are those all, are those all in a fee schedule in the system?
So, right here, if you go into my thing, you go add fees. It gives you everything that you're looking to add here. So I would just click on something, if I wanted to add, put in a stock work order for, you know, say two days. You add that and it comes down here. Removal of stock work order, it's going to cost them $750 for two days.
So that's automatically coming from a fee schedule embedded in the system?
Yep, and then, you know, if you don't want it, you delete it. I'm not going to charge them that.
Forget that you put it on.
So then you also have the ability to end a year reports, this is going to be extremely handy for me. This is a very small one that I just put together just to show it. This is just some of the permits that we have done from 78 to 712. It shows your building permits, plumbing permits, shoreland permits, if you need a certificate of occupancy. So this is what we currently have to do, so this will, and, you know, so this is, this program has taken everything and putting it all into one report instead of having to make these, generate these reports one, one at a time. So it'll, it'll save me a huge deal of time and headache come into the year. And you can run so many different reports, I mean, these are all different types of reports you can run. Depending on, you want to run, you know, what has, what has the revenue been for the, for the code office? You can go and do all that and just figure out what's going on, how much that has done, so. That's kind of in a nutshell, really quick, what it looks like. So you have the ability to even get forms, so this is a CMP 1190 form, so if you wanted service at your place, you can print this, fill it out and upload it and send it back to me and then I, I verify it, sign off on it and send it to CMP. So it gives it, this, this program has a lot of things that is going to help smoothen, speed things up and, and, you know, get rid of some hiccups that we've had. And then it also gives you, like with the shoreland tree removal permit, it gives you kind of what we already have. You know, this was just like a print up, you know, it gives you the explanation of how you, you know, go about doing a tree permit, how you, how to grid it and all that other good stuff.
That's going to come in really handy.
Yeah, yeah. So, but I know there's been a lot, like, there's been a lot of people that have asked to see if we still provide online permits and this will give you, the people, the ability to, to view any permit that's going on. And like I said, it's a limited view, it just lets them know pretty much what's going on on that property. If it's been completed, if it's still in process. Like this one, it shows you the status, it's still active and it's pending because it has no completed date. So some of your people, some of the transparency, that people like, want this town to be more transparent, this will get help out with some of that.
If you're looking for a permit, do you need an address, the property owner's name, what do you need?
So you can search by, so this one says, search by permit number, I have it as permit number right now. I can, I, I was toying with the idea of, it's supposed to have, I think it's actually supposed to have permit name. And that was what happened just a second ago when it didn't actually come up.
Okay.
And I will, I will have that corrected. So.
So you're ready to go live?
Well, you just brought it up. I'll have that fixed by next week, I'm not going to. But yeah, I want to go, I do want to go live, I, I know there's going to be some bugs that we still have to work through. But I don't think there's going to be anything major, it's going to be minor ones that we can, we're going to, you know, I think like anything, any startup, there's always going to have something that comes up. You're never going to be 100% efficient, I'll, right from the beginning, you always strive to be, but I'm hoping that any of the bugs that aren't major, let's put it that way. So I do want to, I do want to go live for the permitting processes of it to help so that we're not, we're not handling permits, applications so many times and people can just do it, fill it out, send it to me. That's the main thing of this thing, the, viewing the permits is a, is a great, added benefit, the report's a great benefit. Let's see. Another thing that I was working with here too is. So this one, you can see, you can go down to the, so for myself, I want to see what's on that parcel. So this brings me right to Acton's map, brings me to the, to the lot that it's being built on and it shows me the permits that are being, being utilized on that property. And it tells me exactly what's happening, you know, you can, if I know what it is, this particular one's getting 15 plumbing fixtures, you know, for, for a plumbing thing, so there's, there's a lot of good uses to this thing. Like I said, I'm hoping there isn't any major works. But I've spent a lot of time working with iWorks, trying to get some of these things fixed and setting it up to the way that I would, I liked it.
So there'll be a permanent announcement on your website? About this application and how they gain access to it?
Yeah, there will be, it'll, it'll, on the website, it'll, for, you know, for, right now it's, gives you a, a link to just print out the permit and then you print it and then you email it to me. This will give you, for online permits, click here, or if you want it, still long form.
So people will know there is a new system that is more automated and it's recommended that they use it.
Yeah. This also does code enforcement, so if I had a violation, I haven't, I've just, these are, some of these are just kind of fake ones right now, I was just playing with it. So when I go in and I have an issue, you can, let's see. Add violation, so this will give you, this goes through my ordinance. It's, it's specific to Acton's ordinance. So if there was something with a mineral extraction industry, you know, permit required, you know, usually they didn't have it or something like that, but you can go through with it and then it actually comes up with the fees. Some of the fees which are all subject to discretion or whatever goes on, but usually, we try to deal with voluntary compliance prior before throwing fees out there. But it gives a record, it'll do a good record of violations. It also, for shoreland, shoreland tree permitting, it gives me an inspection list, so I'll get emailed once a week and it will list all the things for revegetation that need to be re-inspected or be inspected for the first time. And it'll let, you know, okay, this property has three trees in whatever place that needs to be inspected and so that will help out with that process as well. That's a little bit of what it does, I mean, there's a lot to this thing, I'm learning more as I, because I just really started playing with it the last, since, you know, the last month. I started doing a lot of it myself prior to that. Ashley was inputting a lot of stuff and now it's me and so I'm learning a lot more about it and learning. And I've had, you know, some really, really productive meetings with iWork, that's the company that we're dealing with, so when I found a niche, we fixed it right away and they've had very good turnaround time. If I didn't like something, then I, then they, she'll fix it with me right on the, right there on a Zoom meeting, so.
That's good. Well, thank you, Jason, thank you for showing us and thank you for the work you did to put this in place.
Yeah, I'm glad to see something getting done with it because we, we hired the individual there that talked us into it, you know, he explained to us this is a great thing and then when he left, we'd spent quite a bit of money on this, so it's nice to see that it's actually going to be being used.
I think it's a great method and for, well, for my department, but.
Looks like a great system.
It, it will be, you know, you know, we'll be playing with it more and more and getting more familiar with it. But it's, it's going to really make my job easier when it comes to inspections, you know, just getting permits out on time and making sure that you have good order to your system, so.
Great, thank you. Is he up next on the?
Yes.
Yeah, and we'll come back and do the minutes, you don't have a report tonight, Jennifer?
Um, no.
Okay, are there minutes to review?
They were in the folder.
They're in the folder, okay. We'll come back to that, but while you're here.
You guys have to.
They were in with the bills.
Oh, okay.
We'll table it till next week.
You got to table it, you or David have to do it because I wasn't here.
Jason?
Yeah.
Complaint form?
Yeah, so what, you have, I have a copy for you.
Oh, yeah, I gave it back.
So just, we're going to just continue our conversation, you want those too, Jason? So we kind of tabled this last week, Kim, because the board didn't want to make any decisions without you. Tom had found this one from Old Orchard Beach, which Jason had a chance to look over briefly. We're just kind of trying to find what information you like so that we can hopefully put something in final form to you next week. The, the notice at the top, I think we both agree, is very important and it's well written out, so just basic information. I mean, you kind of have the form versus the policy that he wrote, they're kind of going to go, you know, hand in hand. But Jason, did you have at first glance any concerns on this?
Just some of the checkboxes, I mean, it's, that's just minor stuff with the life safety, noise disturbance, blight, I guess. I don't want to mean to sound, but I'm really not even sure what blight is, so. Can you help me out with that one?
I don't think it's good.
Our superintendent is here, he might give us a definition, I first looked at, I thought it was a vegetable of some sort.
I thought it was something that you treat, your plants get in the garden.
I just wasn't sure what it was and so, I didn't want to, you know, if I don't know what it is, there's going to be plenty of other people out there that don't know what it is as well, but I don't, I have no issue with this. I mean, it's a great paper form and I can have this all transferred over because there is a electronic complaint form in the iWorks program.
Oh, nice.
So do you like something like this to make into Acton and we're trying to get a form?
Jennifer, when you say this, which document are you looking?
The complaint form itself. We have to get, yeah.
The one from? Yes, okay.
Because I figured you have to agree on a form before we can have a policy to follow it.
Right. Yeah, so there's, there is, so that iWork program has the permitting process, has, and then has a whole nother page for complaints that, that bring, that they come into me electronically. Still have to be signed, still public knowledge.
Is that the form that you're currently using, did you give them that?
No, 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 no. Oh, I gave them that current form, yes, but it doesn't, that form, they don't upload that form, they just pretty much, you type in your name, address, property of the violation or complaint or inquiry, brief description and then your, your electronic signature. But we can, I can give them this form and definitely have this, this block included with it saying that it is, all complaints are public record, remains Freedom of Information Act, I mean, that I think should be number, right on, right bold letter. Yes, it just, it really should be and they should be signed.
Shouldn't we on the, where it says, name of person, file and complaint, I think, seeing we're trying to get away from the complaint, where it shouldn't be slash inquiry?
Yeah, that's what I, so that's kind of what I had done, I know you guys had gone around, there was some verbiage that you didn't like of the one that Ashley had done up for us, but it was a citizen inquiry slash complaint policy for the town of Acton. I just kind of went on and said that all complaints had to be signed.
I think that makes it easier for someone to, you know, come forward and, and.
I'm just, the only reason I mention it because on, on the complaint policy, it's on that. So it ought to go over to the other.
We were talking earlier and I thought there was, with this form or maybe someplace else you're looking, that if someone didn't want to sign.
It's here. Yes, this one, under signature it says anonymous complaints are accepted, however, the person filing the complaint will not receive a response on any action taken.
If they don't sign.
Sounds to everyone, in other words, they don't have to sign, but there's no follow-up back to the individual. They're not entitled to anything at that point. If they want the detail and a report, then they have to actually sign the form.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, but I thought that one of the things that was, was, was asked of me was to, when I do with the new policy, that if it's not signed, that I, when I'm not supposed to really look.
This says all complaints are public record. I mean, they just won't know who signed it, right, is that what you're?
The problem we have here is what we try, I think we were trying to get away from was these anonymous complaints because the next neighbor hates the next neighbor. So they just send it in complaint, after complaint, after complaint, where, where, so you're going to have them chasing anonymous complaints. We're back to square one again. So I don't think we want to do that, I think what we want to do is stick with the policy we have. Other than that, he'd be chasing his tail again.
So do we want to just change it to a code enforcement inquiry form and whether, you know, and just leave it software?
That was listed here.
There was inquiry and complaint, yeah. Because they are, some of them are just inquiries, they're not really a complaint, they're just like, hey, this is going on over here, I'm not sure if it's allowed, but that doesn't mean it's a complaint, it's just more of a, I'm informing you that somebody's doing this.
Sounds as though we have an interest in this form. You want to make some change to it, right?
Just a, yeah, just.
Some minor change.
Minor changes, yeah.
So what, in, in the policy itself?
We'll just make a couple of changes to coincide with this form.
So would you revise these two and bring, and just?
Mend them together?
Have it for us to review at our next meeting and we'll hopefully can act on it, makes sense?
Yeah, no, I'm good with that, yeah, because this is pretty, pretty basic and has a lot of good stuff on it, so.
And Tom, you said something about the bottom, I know you like the, the office use, talked about the received by, you know, assigned to, action taken, but you mentioned something about the board getting copies of these as they come in?
I wanted to raise that question, if there is a complaint raised, should we get a copy of that? Not for action, but just to be aware of it.
I mean, seeing as it's going to be a paper trail now where there wasn't before.
In the system?
Well, yeah.
In his file, anywhere, in his file.
He's going to have it in his file.
Do we really need?
Either an email or written or whatever. I don't, I like to leave this with the code officer as long as, until we get a complaint that he's not addressing the complaint.
So I think what they've done, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if violations, if fees are opposed, then that comes to the select.
Yes, but we're talking about.
But when it's just a regular complaint, I go out, I inspect the violation, complaint or whatever it is and, and if it's a compliant, something that can be compliant, then we fix it there with the, with the landowner. If not, then we bring it to you guys for some more assistance and guidance and we do currently, anytime a complaint comes in, I do create a separate file for that and they are in red. And so they, if, if there is complaint on a property, like I had one on a property, went in, had a complaint, went to the property, definitely violation, definite violation on the property, came back, went into the complaint folder. This individual, three years ago, did a very similar violation. And so that was on record. And so I added to that file, there's been other times where something's been done, even though there wasn't a complaint, but I still added it to their file so that they had a, their, their property's been stamped, you know, kind of like.
So instead of him reporting out, essentially the selectmen could go downstairs anytime, you keep those filed separately? So they could go through and look at the complaint files?
And like any file, they're public knowledge, you know, with the correct paperwork filed.
Any public comment on this? Yeah, please.
I have a question. In a form like complaint slash.
Ray, you want to come up? I've sucked up enough dust today that I can't talk.
Instead of having it like complaint slash inquiry, being that it's going on in the system, wouldn't it be, make more sense to separate those two, was an actual complaint or just an inquiry? Instead of having that slash in there, because then how do you know actually what it is?
I think it was trying to put a different connotation on this, so it wasn't quite so.
It was kind of P being more PC.
Yeah, so that, some people would be reluctant to sign a complaint form where if it was viewed as an inquiry slash complaint, they might be more apt to come forward and feel comfortable.
And their complaint, they can say, I'm inquiring.
Yeah, yeah. It's purely language, some people, I think we heard feedback from the community about concern about it being a complaint form and they ask, could we change this to complaint slash inquiry? That, that's where it came from. It's the same, it's the same form, the same action, Jason, you would have the same follow-up and, and process, so it's, it's, it's just a form title.
It doesn't feel as harsh to the neighbor when they find out the name, someone just made an inquiry.
Because they can feel, they don't feel like they're actually making a complaint, they just wanted to make me aware of something.
They can tell their neighbor it was an inquiry, not a complaint.
Yeah, but at the same time, you'll know when it's a complaint.
It's still a complaint, but it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so once an inquiry or complaint is made and you go to the person that the inquiry was made for, not the person that made it, you're going to tell them who made the inquiry?
If they ask.
If they ask.
It's public knowledge.
Yeah, you can't. So if I do an inquiry on my neighbor, you're going to go to my neighbor and say that I made a complaint?
If they ask, oh no, if they ask.
If they specifically say, hey, I want to know who complained, who made, filed this complaint, then, then they can come in and look at the record or I can just tell them. But either way, like I think it's public knowledge.
And it very well should be, I mean, I'm a contractor, I work on jobs all over the place and we have people complain about everything and, and you, you want to know whether or not you've got a neighbor next by that's complaining. And when you want to know which one's complaining, so you're going to appease them also, you know, because they'll, they'll call the code officer.
This is not being, this is, this is not being started just.
And you, you will have people who will make complaints, just numerous ones, just to be, just to be that.
I also kind of think that that would stop people from making complaints or inquiries, because if you're going to tell the other person who made the complaint or inquiry.
It cuts back, cuts back on them.
Well, it does, but you're going to look at it both ways, there's two sides of every, you know, you have people who complain just because there's someone building beside their, their place, so they're going to complain about it and this person's done nothing wrong. Okay, we have that a lot, okay?
It takes a lot of time and effort to, to, to research at one point. And if it's, and if it's someone just trying to stir, yeah, thank you, stir the pot because they don't like their neighbor, they don't like the project that they're doing, it's a lot of time that I could have been spending on something that was supposed to be.
I believe the law requires that it be made available as well. It's freedom of information, we, we have to be able to provide that.
They don't have to advertise, I mean, we don't expect the code officer to walk in and say Billy Bob said or Billy Bob complained, but if the conversation comes up, he's not going to lie to them, he's going to tell them where it came from.
That's the first question that's going to come out of.
Well.
Are you surprised? I've dealt with more than, more complaints than you think of and a lot of people don't ask who it was. But if they were, then you know it's public knowledge, but some people, they're more apologetic and they don't even remember to ask who made the complaint. It's more or less saying, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, you know, I didn't know.
Most of the time, they already know who made the complaint.
You've got that person up there with a camera.
Thank you, any other comment? Okay, Jason, if you come back next week, or the next meeting?
So one more for Jason before he tips away. The next item on the agenda?
Okay, wreck parking lot.
Last week, there were public questions about whether or not the town fell under ordinance requirements and kind of where that stood.
So the only thing in my ordinance that I have is, would be under something that would be, you'd be under site plan review. So if you're, if you're building a building, then you have required parking spots and layout that you have to submit a plan. This is a gravel parking lot for recreational uses. I think the only thing that really matters would be that emergencies, there's enough room for emergency services to turn around. And, you know, if it's a par, it's a paved surface, then I think there's something in my ordinance that says that if every 10 spots, then you have to create an island, but it doesn't say anything for, for compacted gravel parking lot.
So you think it doesn't apply?
It doesn't apply.
You know, the, the other buildings around there, just put their parking lots in, there was no curb ban or anything, they're dirt.
They're all dirt, right?
That was all, that had all gone through the planning board, so.
But the big question from last week was, is the town of Acton properties, are the town of? town of Acton properties exempt from the town of Acton ordinance? And the answer is no. We, town properties follow it just like everyone else's.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, so that.
That came from legal.
You got a legal.
Well, no, we, we may have to start rethinking how we do things here, because if we're, if we're gonna, you know, say like this, what's the difference between somebody putting in a 200 by 200-foot parking lot in their, their business? Okay, you gotta go get a conditional use permit, right?
Expansion of use, yep.
Yeah, so, we turn around, we're gonna put a huge parking lot down rec field, and we have no.
Is this, would the size of this parking lot require conditional use if it was any property owner?
Uh, it would require a vegetated 20% lot coverage report showing that you had less than 20% impermeable surface on that property. That's, if somebody came to me and said, hey, I'm looking to put in a, a parking lot, packed gravel or concrete or, or something like that, I would have to say, well, I gotta look at your lot coverage and make sure that you have enough vegetated surface.
Hasn't that happened? I mean, didn't you, you had, didn't you have conversations with the members of the prior wreck about the parking lot? Or we just didn't look at the ordinance at that time?
Um, I, I don't remember what the acreage on that, that lot is, but I think there was a lot of, I, I think it met it. I didn't require anybody to, to fill out a 20% lot coverage form.
So, maybe we have that record.
Are you saying that is applicable on this site, though?
I don't know. I was kind of.
I don't want to put you on the spot or anything, I'm just, it, it's funny, because the individuals that brought up our ordinance there that we were supposed to be breaking or whatever, so that we're, all of a sudden, we're gonna have to start going by this, okay? Which I kind of, we're, we're curbing on a dirt parking lot, but at the same time, when legal tells us, well, we, we aren't exempt from any, any ordinances, that kind of puts us in a really tough spot here, because say if we, any project that we do on our own properties, because we are a business.
Conducional use, and then that takes up the planning board time, it's expenses.
So, we're, so the select board would have to go to the planning board to approve a project.
You know, and a lot of times, you have engineered surveys for some of these things, you know.
I mean, with all the zoning changes that we do once a year, you can always put a blurb in there, making municipal properties exempt from zoning ordinances. I mean, his first.
I think that's the way.
You know, his first response.
This'll turn into a quagmire, especially when people look into the ordinances the wrong way, like they did last week.
Right.
And put us in a spot like we are now discussing something we probably shouldn't even be discussing.
Right.
So, you know, we gotta look into this, and because we've got other projects we want to be doing, and we don't have to worry about somebody going, oh, gee, you know, you didn't go get your conditional use permit.
Where are we on having the, the plan for that field finalized? Is it, Jake, I, I know you went down and marked it out.
So, I, I gave up on it.
You gave up.
Well, I'm gonna explain why I didn't, I didn't give up on it. I went down, explained, and I explained last week what I thought we should be doing.
What was the footage? What was your thought?
I reduced the, because right now, it's laid out at like 190 by 145 by 115. It's not even square.
Yeah, it's need to be.
It's just kind of a, so, with the slope and everything else that I, you, you have to, you can't just build a parking lot flat and have drop-off. You're gonna have slopes and everything else, so, with drainage and all that, I figure we have to, you know, shorten up, narrow it up a little bit, and shorten it up a little bit, just so we can get our slopes because of the pitch. We're not sure whether or not, we haven't met with our director, rec director to explain it all, or if somebody ought to go, you know, we ought to go down and at least go over it with her, but at the same time, if they're not happy with that, then we're stuck in a spot, well, what do we do?
Right.
Okay, and, and talking to Will the other day, I think he agreed that, you know, we've gotta do some different stuff, especially with costs and everything else. Don't believe that there'd be money enough to even fill that whole area anyways, but.
I, I didn't follow that, David.
I, I talked to Will the other day.
Yeah.
Because he had, he's the one originally marked it off, and I was trying to get a justification of why it was marked off the way it was, because it didn't, it looked to me like all he had done is really marked it off for the tree cut, not the parking lot itself.
Okay.
You know, you can't put 190-foot parking lot in between the trees like that. You have to, I can't make it, make it right. So, really, what we gotta do is, before we even make a, a bid, I want to make sure that the rec director and rec committee is fine with what my recommendation was. If not, then what we're gonna have to do for them to get their max parking spaces, possibly have somebody engineer it.
Okay. The only involvement I had with it, Tom, was Will came to me, and I asked him to maintain a vegetated buffer between that and the property, the adjacent property, as well as the resource protection in the back, to stay away from cutting the trees back there, and that was pretty much the only involvement I had, where there was no permit for, required for it.
Yeah, and when Tom said that, I know you heard him say, Jason, he meant David. That's what he was asking, so.
All right, I would just.
That's what he meant to say.
So, I didn't, I don't really think that we ought to be slapping anything together until we get their approval. That's what size they want. If they want it bigger, and they want to go another route, then we're not gonna waste our time with that.
I think, I think the role the rec committee and the rec director are at play is providing their input. You say getting their approval, not to me, I, I think this is a town project.
And, and you're right.
And so, I think we ought to get their input. If, they ought to look at the plan. If they think it's deficient, we ought to understand what that is, but in the final analysis, we've got a project that needs to be done. We've got people, I believe, are parking on 109. There's a safety issue. If we sit here twiddling our thumbs because we can't get everybody on the same page and someone gets hit, you know, that's just gonna be.
This has been an ongoing thing for many years.
No, I, I know, I'm just saying that.
I just don't want to make it look like Dave Winchell rolled in, you're gonna get this for a parking lot. I want to meet with them and agree, this is what we're gonna get, we're gonna do, and if they want to squawk about what.
Well, it's more like what we can do.
I gotta tell you, thank you for doing the work that you did. I think it's great that you did that.
I just don't want to make it look like I just come and run over there ideas.
No, no, no. You gotta meet with them, whoever, you know, Kim is the rep, if you wouldn't mind, let's go over what, what your rationale is for doing what you think is necessary. Jason, you need to look at this and just make sure that it's consistent with.
Zoning.
With zoning requirements, and.
And that's kind of.
If it isn't, you gotta tell us.
Well, that's what I did when I, when I met with Will. He came in and just, because it was more or less, what can I cut? You know, where can I put this, this parking lot? And I went over, that, that land does fall within some resource protection, and I told him to stay away from it, give it, it was like 75 feet from that. There's a buffer zone, and then I asked.
Let me, let me put it in another way. Does this need a permit?
Does it need a what?
A permit that would basically say that you've reviewed it and you're signing off on it.
Well, we've always, in the past, we've gotten permits on town projects, which has been exempt, we've been exempt from the fee.
Yeah, so we got a permit for the town shed.
Yeah, we always get building permits.
So, should, would we need a permit to put in a parking lot?
If, if it was a business, they would be going in front of the planning board. I don't know how to answer that one, because I don't really, it's a, it's a gravel park, it's a gravel, it's not a structure, it's not, I mean.
Opening can or RMC.
Yep, I do.
Okay, I'm just trying to get this thing done.
Do they have to go?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, yeah, I don't know, I, yeah.
Well, let's, I mean, let them check with one of your resources, you know. It doesn't, it shouldn't matter who owns it, if it's, you know what I mean? If, if we're being told that, you know, we have to follow the same guidance, just find out as it means, you know, if we need a permit or not.
Okay.
Or if we need to go before the planning board.
I know when I did, when I did the town shed, I remember Ken Paul wouldn't even sign off.
Right.
Told us we weren't allowed to use the shed, even though we did anyways, because winter was coming, we need to put our sand up.
Yeah.
But he would not sign off on the permit until the, we had to have engineers come down and do a little rock routine upon, just drainage, it was a drainage plan, and he, and so, it was something he had to do.
Yeah, we've always followed ordinance policies.
You needed that?
Yeah, something, yeah.
Something similar to that? Okay, well, I'll look into it. I'll have an answer for you. Do you want to?
We're gonna meet with, with Sam?
We're gonna meet with Sam.
Yep.
As soon as possible.
I'd like to meet with her tomorrow night. I don't know if she can meet with us, but I don't know.
Arrange it, and what I'll do is.
It can be later.
I'll put gravestakes, my laser and all this other stuff, and we'll try to figure out the best, best way to do this.
Okay.
What time tomorrow are you thinking? Five o'clock, six o'clock?
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, no.
Tomorrow?
It's Thursday.
Well, I need to meet with her.
She was planning on meeting.
How about I meet with her tomorrow, and then her and I will figure out, maybe the start of next week or something, maybe like Monday or Tuesday, you know.
As long as we get it done before the next meeting.
Right.
And that'll give Jason a chance.
At that point, we have all the.
Yep.
Have the code issues resolved, and we should have an RFP.
Was it?
Board.
Yes, we'll be a lot closer.
RFP next.
Yes.
Okay.
Let's get her, her opinion.
Yeah.
Get Jason to handle his.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Jason. We're only down to B.
Huh?
We're only down to B.
I know it. New bridge fence.
She's awesome. Five o'clock tomorrow. Kim.
Hi.
Certified letter went out.
Wonderful.
Never saw the property owner, never showed up in my office, so I just sent it.
Okay. Roofing RFP?
All right, so we've changed this up some, so this is what it says now. The town of Acton is currently accepting bids for the full replacement of a metal roof at 839 Sanborn Road. The roof is approximately 40 by 30 and is a two-bay commercial steel garage. Interested bidders should complete the form below and return it sealed to the town administrator by Wednesday, August 10th. Attention, blah, blah, blah. Interested bidders who would like to view the project shall contact Route Commissioner Adam Dolber to arrange. The winning bidder must have liability insurance, proof of workers' comp, and a completed I-9. So, we've listed out specifically, based on your meeting last week, what I believe you want to hear, or see. Proposed materials be, to be used, including the finish, gauge, and type of materials, et cetera, the fastening material and related components to be used, the rating of the insulation, warranty details, estimated project start and end date, and other information to be considered by the select board. Oh, and how about we put cost?
Cost, yes.
Thoughts? Is that better?
No, I like it.
Perfect. Let's just say it's out, RFP.
Any, any comment? Okay, so.
It'll be out tomorrow.
Need a motion on this?
No, just your approval.
Okay, fine.
I'll take the nods.
Thank you. Thanks for everyone doing that. Rec parking lot, we.
So, that's just gonna kind of be tabled until we get.
Yeah, okay, all right, I was wondering why I was there twice. Town hall water.
Letters went out to half a dozen companies, basically saying enclosed, please find our most recent water results. Please give us your recommendation on how you would fix it and what it would cost us.
Very good.
Beautiful.
Thank you. Agenda policy.
So, this is just a rough draft, and the last paragraph is waiting for your magic word, so, it's the policy of the select board to allow any committee, board, or other outside agency to place an agenda item before the Metta Weekly meeting. To be considered, the agenda item, along with supporting documentation, must be submitted to the town administrator by 10:00 a.m. on Tuesdays to appear that week. Board members will hear the agenda item at their Wednesday meeting, review the packet presented, and ask any questions. All agenda items which require a vote will be tabled until the following week, at which time an action will be taken. Committee, board, and agenda, or committee, board, and other agencies are encouraged to attend both meetings to answer any questions. Property owners or Acton residents wishing to give their input on non-agenda items are encouraged to speak under public comment. The select board reserves the right to deny an agenda item should it violate any employee rights or appears to be, what do you want to say? I mean, you've got to have a clause in there that allows you to not put, you know, actions of a personnel issue or something on the agenda. There's certain things, you know.
I would just say that the select board reserves the right to deny any agenda item.
Period.
Right. Don't have to give a reason.
All right.
All right with you?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Other than that, is it all right?
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda policy.
Do you have a second?
Well, I have to pretty it up and everything.
Ready? I thought you were gonna say something.
I am in a second.
I'll second that.
All right, comment?
Now we do.
Yep. I wasn't expecting my first draft to go through that quickly.
Looks good.
Does that policy now lock you into not being able to take emergency action on actionable items? Last year, we had a furnace failure. I needed that money approved in the middle of winter to get the furnace repaired.
I can answer this.
That's gonna take now two weeks, as I understood it.
In, in the past, when we've had a policy, we can break our policy for circumstances.
And something like that, you would definitely make a.
You know, this is, this is something there that, you know, when a department head comes up, it gives us, will give us a little bit more time to, if it's not an emergency, obviously, Circumstances are circumstances, but we have instances where we probably could look into things a little bit more.
We can add that. We can say the select board reserves the right to deny an agenda item or waive this policy for an emergency.
Yeah.
That would be.
That's fine.
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect.
My only other statement would be pushing some agenda items from week to week does not, to me, constitute the best use of your department head's time. Each of us have a limited amount of time to put into stuff. And for me to show up to a meeting for a five-minute speech for a two-hour-long meeting is two hours or an hour and fifty-five minutes that I'm not doing stuff to advance the fire department. When I could email stuff to you guys ahead, you could review it, I could come to that week's meeting, and then we could pass whatever agenda needs to happen. Having my physical appearance at two meetings can slow down the process, and I just don't think it's necessarily always the best use of my time.
The.
I mean, it says you're encouraged.
It says to encourage, it's not, you don't have to be here. So obviously, unless it's, I mean, I'm sure, Rick, if it was something that was really crucial, you'd want to be here for it anyways.
Yep.
Obviously, if it's not that crucial, then we don't need you here.
Yep. And in the past, there's been stuff that I didn't think was super crucial, that was boilerplate, just looking for an annual signature on, and I had to appear for multiple meetings for it. So I don't always have the best gauge on what you guys are looking for for that, and I just wanted to make that statement as a department head with a limited amount of time.
We try not to drag in department heads unless we absolutely have to. I mean, the road commissioner show up just about every week because that's because they have to tell us what they're going to be doing for the next week anyways. But we try not to put you guys out too much, but we'll do our best not to.
Thank you.
So I guess I'll, so what do we?
Well, I'm going to, I need to make those changes. You can motion to sign it next week. You'll sign it.
Want to do that? Okay.
Yep.
Petition policy.
Okay, so I sent the proposed petition to Main Municipal and basically said that, you know, the board approved, the select board has authorized petitioners to get advice on whether or not the question below listed would be properly worded before they gather signatures. I went on to talk about it. This is the response. Good afternoon, Jennifer. Because MMA's member municipalities are our clients, MMA Legal Service is only available to provide advice to municipal officials. Members of the public seeking input regarding the legality of their own petition wording would need to obtain that advice from a private attorney. If the select board on its own violation wishes to put this type of question forward to a town meeting, vote, please circle back, and I will certainly be happy to advise the board on the wording of its question.
Okay. So we can't do what we thought we could do because those services, those free legal review services are not available to private citizens.
Correct.
Now, what happens if, okay, they go out, they do everything. Do we check it before? Can we check it or no? I mean.
We can't change, you cannot change the wording of a petition after somebody has signed it.
That's what I thought.
That's the problem. Say if they go out and they go out and they get two hundred signatures or whatever.
And it's not right.
Or it's illegal, then bang, it's no good. They got to do it all over again.
Well, there isn't much we can, I mean.
Isn't much we can do about it.
No, there isn't much we can do about it, so.
Okay.
Well, I mean, what I suggest is the people come to the select board and, you know, they can ask for us to put it on the warrant. Anybody else can do the same thing. We've had other people do it. If they feel like doing it, then we'll figure it out from there. I hate to have them waste their time on a petition if it's not going to be worded right.
So.
At the end of the day, it doesn't really matter anyways.
So you're asking the people that wanted to get this petition together to just come and ask us to just put it on?
Yeah, because I mean, we were talking, we were already talking a while back there about possibly going this route anyways. We were kind of using this petition to be a kind of a census, whether or not this is what people want to do.
Right.
So, but I don't want to see them having to go get legal just to help us figure out what we want to do for the next town meeting. So myself, I would invite them up and ask us, well, ask to do something here, and then we can discuss it and go from there. Figure it out. If there's a big clamor about it, then we can have some, you know, what do they call that?
Could we have a, I mean, it doesn't have to be during the summer, but in the fall, couldn't we have some informational, have a?
Yeah, that's what I was, I was trying to come up with a word.
One of the things, I mean, Tom did last week was he wanted to get input. He put it out for a week to see what kind of emails he could get on.
That's what I was, you know.
People that had concerns on how the town report possibly showed. Maybe you put it out for a week and see if you get input.
Right.
Yeah.
You know. You know.
And we can always, you know, have a meeting and then advertise it.
If I understand what you're saying, David, if you've got two groups that, two groups of citizens that have an interest in two distinct petitions or warrants, and they would have an opportunity, regardless of who they are, to come to the selectmen and basically request that the selectmen put this item as a warrant to be presented, it actually comes from the selectmen, correct?
Yes.
And so the selectmen would take a vote. There would be a motion and a vote, and it would require a majority vote. So Group A might be accepted by the selectmen and Group B might not.
Well, there's a chance.
And if it is accepted, then we would. Sorry. I was going to say, like, if Group A, you know, just say we, you know, it was a majority vote, that, yeah, we'd go ahead. And then what will we do? Would we have a special town meeting or would you want to wait until?
I mean, I think you're getting ahead of it. I think what he's saying is that you've got two groups that there's a chance they're going to be treated differently, depending on just how.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Just how the three of you feel. I mean, let's just, let's just be honest and talk about a couple that we know are out there. So if we talk about possibly changing to a five-member board, let's say that, you know, one of you were in favor and two again, so you're not going to support putting that on the next warrant. So that, you know, that group of citizens, you know, would have to continue with their petition. The next one you get is changing town meeting to a secret ballot. Two of you agree with that.
But it's a little different, though, because we kind of brought, we kind of brought it up ourselves.
Right. No, and you, and I agree with that because you brought it up because people came to you.
Because the last town meeting was really pathetic on how many people.
But that's what Tom was trying to say, is that.
I'm just trying to.
But the difference is this.
The items.
They're trying to get a petition, they can't get signed. They, we never, we never discussed it before. We brought this up originally ourselves. At least I did.
I was going to say, you did.
I know you didn't.
I did know.
And so when I brought that up here, then, of course, Kim and I had talked about it during that meeting, was, okay, let's have them put the petition out as a, like a census. This would tell us whether or not we're on the right route.
The value of petition.
But at the same time, this is a route that I think that we should be going. We have the power to put that on the warrant without having a petition. We brought this up before anybody brought it up to us.
Right. And their defense, I mean, they've been talking about it since COVID, even before you were on the board.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, I was on the fence quite a while about it. Kim will attest to that. But over time here, I've just found that we're just not getting enough participation. And when I, you know, between, we had more participation at Candidates Night.
Then.
Than we did at town meeting.
Do we typically take requests from residents for the Board of Selectmen to advance a warrant like that?
I mean, that's how.
Or are they generated by the board?
Well, I mean.
Or departments or how do they come?
The conversations, I think, have come everywhere. I mean, if we look at Flat Ground Road, we look at Article forty-six.
There's already a process for the board to determine which items the board will advance as warrants.
Flat Ground Road never had a signed petition.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying. The conversations start at selectman meetings, you know, the Flat Ground Road, we couldn't come up with an agreement on both sides. So it was a, the parties got together and said, okay, let's ask the people, you know, Article forty-six, the funds we found became available, and that road committee, that group said, okay, ask the board, let's get this together and do it. So it's not, you know, they've done it with, in conjunction with other departments and committees.
Okay.
It's not something that we don't do anyways.
I'm trying to think of times that it's down.
Trying to clarify here.
Yeah.
So what do you want to do? So I need to reach out to at least Mr. Roder, who wrote it. We need to tell him, you know, the response of Main Municipal because they think they're waiting on a response.
Well, I was, I was just thinking, we're going to have, we have a, what is it? I'm trying to think of the name. You were doing the same thing. But you come up with the same word, just can't figure it out.
Informational night?
A public hearing?
Public hearing.
Yeah, thank you. That's what we were looking for.
It was a long day.
What are we doing, a public hearing?
Well, we were saying.
We're having a public hearing when, for the.
Well, we were going to have one for the fitness center possibly, as far as input on what they wanted to do with that.
You know, it might be an idea there that we can join, so that way we could get enough people that, you know, we might get more people to be involved.
Be involved, right?
To have some sort of public hearing. Combine a couple of things like that, whatever, and kind of discuss what the feeling is of it. If we have a bunch of people show up, say, I like, I like town meeting, this is the way we're going to roll, I want to roll, and it looks like that's a consensus, then fine.
Then it would be up to the petitioners to figure out the wording.
Yeah.
Yep.
But are you saying that if you, if it went the other way, you would consider moving it forward?
I think if a bunch of people showed up, say, hey, this is what we want, you know, this is, we've got to move on here, then, you know, I think the select board can make that decision on their own.
So has Mr. Roder formalized his request for this?
Yes, that evening he gave us, because that evening last week or two weeks ago, you guys said, give us something in writing. And he handed me that, and that's what went to Main Municipal. And that's how we got this response.
All right. So should we put him on the next agenda and have him come and talk about it?
Well, I'll just, I'm just going to call him and tell him what the stance is, but the idea, I think, if you want to have a public hearing to get the townwide feel, is I'll tell him that this is why the board, you know, isn't pursuing that through Main Municipal, but the flip side is we're going to have a public hearing this night, and you can come bring your thoughts then. If you're trying to, you know, weigh the town.
I think that's a good idea.
I guess from a process standpoint, if a citizen wants to advance a notion of a warrant, it seems to me they ought to present that to the board. The board can then decide whether or not it wants to consider this or not. We then may have a public hearing.
Right, but didn't.
And then we would take a vote on whether or not we want to advance this as a Board of Select.
Well, it's kind of.
But didn't he already did that, though?
He's already, he's already really.
Well, he. I.
Yeah, him and Jim came and spoke to you.
Oh, no, I recall the conversation. It was a very brief conversation, as I recall. Maybe if I saw the document he gave you, that might help.
It was just a piece of paper, it was just an article written out.
Okay, well, could you?
Oh, yeah, so we can invite them.
No, no, Charlie, just give me a copy of it, just so I can see. Had you seen it, David?
No.
It was just whatever he read out, yeah.
He read it to us the other night, and then that was it.
Right.
Why don't you just send us that, okay?
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
So what, so what am I doing? Am I, are we, are we going the route of a public hearing to see if there's enough for you guys to consider putting it forward, or do you want?
I think we should put it on our next agenda after reviewing this, and there ought to be some position taken by the board that we want to advance this for a public hearing.
Yeah.
Fair enough?
Yeah.
And we'll do that at our next meeting.
After the public hearing, that's when we decide whether or not we're going to.
Whether or not we want to.
Yeah. That's kind of what I was talking about.
Yeah, that's fine. So, but we ought to take it up on our next meeting. All right?
Okay.
Any comment on that?
Here's my question lies in the fact that, I mean, you guys went to MMA. MMA said that they would only help municipalities. So if a person writes a petition and gathers the signatures, and they go through the process of getting legal and that whole nine yards, what you're saying is that you still have the authority to reject that?
No.
No.
Well, we're. What we're saying is we can, we can put forward the article on our own, okay? We can decide not to with a vote between the three of us. If we decide not to, and then say you take that petition, you go out and say, well, I'm going to fix those guys, and they come back, then we have to do it.
Right.
Yeah, there's no option here. The only thing is, it's going to be incumbent upon you, if you're doing that petition, to make sure it's properly worded and legal, and you may have to pay for a legal review.
Right.
Because the last thing you'd want to do is have that go through. Would we have a petition reviewed by legal before we brought it? You know, a citizen's petition, would that be reviewed by legal before we presented it at town meeting?
We have it reviewed by legal just so that the Board of Selectmen can answer questions. This, one of the last ones, and I hate to reference it. Thank you. We were told that it would not be able to be enforced, and it wasn't legal, but we were required to put it forward anyway.
So we put it forward and we make a comment at town meeting that, you know, this could not be enforced, or it isn't legal, or whatever.
Right, that's what we had to do.
That's a perfect example. That petition right there is a perfect example of what I'm talking about. That was something that the select board was not going to put through, okay? We were not going to put that on a warrant, but that individual went out and got signatures and failed miserably, okay? But we had to put it on.
All right. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Rick?
No, that's my question.
Any other comment? All right. County Road.
So David asked me to put this back on the agenda. Before you give an update, I did, per our conversation, send an email to the sheriff.
Yep.
Basically asking him or confirming what I believed that if we post it for a registered vehicle weight, registered weight, that they would enforce it as our contract deputy. And he replied, indicating that he wasn't quite sure how that was going to happen, and he deferred to one of his administrative employees who was out of the office for a few more days.
Yeah, so I just asked to have this put on here because we had, we had talked about posting that road. And then after the fact, like I said, it was kind of a knee-jerk reaction that night. I think the weight was a little lower than it probably should have been. Then when we got talking to the sheriff, this is Sanborn, right?
Correct. Did we say more?
Yeah. His concern was enforcement, this and that, so, well, we're not going to post a road if we can't enforce it, you know? So he sent us some information. He talked to Department of Transportation, you know, I mean, well, DOT, State Police, back and forth, but I wanted to make sure that Sheriff King was going to stand behind and actually enforce this before we waste our time, throwing signs up and everything else. So, so I think, I like to have a conversation with him.
And you may be sooner than.
So you're going to follow up on that?
Yeah, I'm the road liaison, so I'll follow up with it. And of course, I'm pretty familiar with the commercial trucks anyways, so.
All right. Town report.
So last week, you had put it out there to see if you got any input on concerns?
Didn't receive any input.
Okay. So, and I know you were kind enough to send Ron an email. Did we get a response and when we were going to have our short audit?
I wrote to the audit partner and asked them how the audit was going and what their expected completion date would be. Last year, the report was dated November.
November first.
I believe, I recalled, we went back to their proposal, and there was no date in there. So, but I seem to recall, and maybe it was due to special circumstances that it was delayed last year, but I seem to recall being told the audit was generally done in September. Does that, does that sound right?
Yeah, it does sound closer than November.
I think I may have gotten that from the treasurer. Well, if they can do their work in September, what I would propose is we schedule to have the annual report published and available for distribution October 31st.
Is that going to be enough time?
If the department heads get their committee reports sorted.
That's the key. And the department reports are not, you know, not all that elaborate or complex, as I understand it. And the, and the selectmen need to write a report.
Well, the only thing is you got to remember, too, between getting it put together.
Yeah.
Printing and everything else, we put ourselves to a deadline in October, that might be a little.
So, I mean, today is July 20th. If you, if you had all of the department letters in by August 15th, I mean, we're, we require them in Microsoft Word. So we were essentially copying, pasting, and making the formatting throughout the document.
I thought we had an issue there a couple of years ago of getting them actually printed out and done.
No, because, well, that was before we were sending it to them in a PDF form, so it's changed, but you're right. So, I mean, if, the board just needs to set a deadline for the departments and the committees.
We give you that deadline.
I'm going to send them a memo.
And then you can, and then you can make sure that everyone who has a role in this preparation of the report understands what date needs to be, these documents need to be in by.
Right.
So that we, the printing usually takes.
It's a pretty quick turnover.
Yeah, it's like a few days, maybe a week.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought we already, I thought we already discussed the deadline. I thought it was the second week in August.
We didn't, we didn't set one last week because we weren't sure what we were putting in it, and we got caught.
Oh, okay, because I remember the second week in August.
But there hasn't, there has been no input unless there's, and we can open it up for.
Well, we're already, we're already past our fiscal year.
I mean, we have one, two, three, four department heads here. I mean, do we feel like if we set the deadline for Friday, August 12th, that gives you three and a half weeks to get your report together? I feel like that's generous. Perfect, August 12th.
August 12th.
I'm just trying to put a stake in the ground, David.
No, no, it's a good, no, it's a good idea. I just, I just don't.
We got one, two, three.
Make sure we don't want to cram them, you know? Make sure we don't want to cram them, you know?
I think we're going to go back to Jennifer, she's going to lay out the steps. Doesn't work, then we can always change it.
Yep.
Do you not think three and a half weeks is enough to write a one-page report?
It should be.
No, it is, it's pretty fine. No, I'm just-
And I'm counting my department heads and committees.
That's not what I was saying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think they should be able to do that in, like, a couple hours.
You hear that, gentlemen?
Tomorrow.
Well, it took me about 15 minutes to do mine.
What was the concern?
Oh, I just, just the timeline.
Joe, I heard that was unnecessary. Let's just be happy nobody else-
Oh, what's that, I didn't do one?
No, not in this meeting, no.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I always did one.
No.
I didn't do one because I wasn't road commissioner anymore.
That's not what he said.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we'll-
Whatever, Joe.
We'll send a memo out.
Look, when we get the public comment, someone wants to make a public comment, we'll deal with it there. Okay, so, we're trying to put a stake in the ground.
August 12th.
We want to get this thing distributed, fully printed, distributed by October 31st. We've got a date for when department head reports are in. We're going to get a date for when the annual report from the auditors is going to be prepared. Jennifer, you could just kind of look at that, does that all make sense?
Yes, I got it.
If that August 31st, uh, October 31st date doesn't look good, let us know, okay?
I would think if you've got everything in by the middle of August, we should be fine.
I think that's a reasonable timeframe to get it out to people and address the criticism that we had last year about it not getting out. Fair enough?
Sounds good.
All right. Any comment on that? Okay. New business, Hazard Mitigation Plan.
You awake, Rick?
Oh, still somehow. Hazard mitigation plan, so this is an annual thing that we need to sign to get back to county EMA, so that we can accept funds from county EMA projects, Maine EMA projects, FEMA projects. If we have a natural disaster, and we submit for reimbursement for that type of work to be done, without this form being signed, we can't submit for reimbursement. So it's pretty standard, every town in the county has to agree to it. The mitigation plan is pretty standard, just says, like, if there's floods, we'll fix the roads, and we'll evacuate people, and we'll make sure everyone's safe. And if there's fires, we'll put them out and make sure everyone's safe. And it's pretty standard, but it's part of the paperwork process to receive federal-
Nothing new in there, Rick.
Federal and state funding.
And we've been signing these for-
As long as I've been alive.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Shall I have a motion?
Need a motion?
I make a motion to sign the hazard mitigation plan.
I'll second that.
Any comment? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Rick.
I'm the next agenda item, so-
Okay, let's go right to it.
Well, good thing you showed up tonight, huh?
So, over different years, over different boards, we've talked about reviewing the mass gathering policy, or ordinance, sorry, mass gathering ordinance. The ordinance itself needs a lot of work, it's probably something we should have reviewed and adjusted before our next town meeting, so that can get processed. But along with that, there's fees associated. In 2020, the board agreed to certain fee structure for those things. Hourly wages has gone up, fuel has gone up, the fees need to go up accordingly. We've got, in discussion, different ideas about how we do that. I'd also like permission from the board to increase the pay for my people that are doing the coverage of these. It's outside of their normal work. It's harder to find people to cover normal shifts, never mind extra shifts of, you know, doing these standbys and things like that. And I'd like to be able to compensate them and have some incentive for them to sign up for these. Make it more of a, hey, I want to go stand by the Renaissance Fair, or that concert, or whatever it may be, instead of, ugh, I have to go stand by the Renaissance Fair, or the concert, or whatever it may be, you know? Like, I try to sign up for the rock concert ones and not the country music ones, that's just my personal preference. But any way that we could incentivize these people to do that is going to be better. I don't think anybody's gotten overabundance of help lately, and so spreading mine too thin is something I'm trying to be careful about.
So some things the board should take into consideration is that back in 2020, that was the last time the board discussed rates, and you did set some rates at the guidance of the fire chief. It is tough timing, because these are coming into play over the next 30 days. So these, I think, are the only fees anybody knows at this point?
Yes.
Or at least some of the agencies, it's the only fees they know. So just to keep in mind, as you make your decision, that that's the last time I think we've notified them of fees, so.
I understand what you're saying, Rick. I think, well, we ought to do something different than what we already, what we've signed. I think right now, we're, what, a month, a little bit over a month away from Acton Fair. Renaissance Fair is when?
This weekend and next weekend.
This weekend, okay. I think what I recommend is we roll what we already have.
Okay.
What I would like to see you come back with, I don't myself prefer the hourly rate, for the simple reason is, when, say, we're using Renaissance Fair, because they're coming, okay? They have a certain block, they're going to be there, right?
Yep.
They should be able to say, okay, day rate this, half-day rate this, comes with this. You know, and I think it'd be easier, and then you can put your estimated increases into that next- And the policy now, and then turn around and make another policy right down the street.
Right.
Which it sounds like that's what we're going to do, right?
My question on the day, half-day, full-day, whatever, is everybody's is different.
Yeah.
So in the cases of the Renaissance Fair, they're requesting coverage from 10 to 7:00 PM.
You get a minimum.
And, so, yeah, and then, like, for the fair, they're, they have, they claim four full days. But on Thursday, we come in late, and Sunday, we leave early, because they drop below the threshold of, there's not so many people there that we need to be there, so we-
So you do a minimum, a half-day minimum?
Yep.
And if it goes over the half-day, you charge them for a full day.
Okay.
Hours, months.
As long as we're on-
So we're going to leave it, we're going to leave the fee schedule currently in place.
Yep.
Applicable for this year.
Okay.
I'd suggest you work with the treasurer to develop these rates, so we understand what the costs are that we're trying to recover. It sounds like what you're suggesting is a special rate for your firefighters and EMTs.
Two parts, so I want to build a, pay my people a special rate, and then receive compensation from these private-
It's almost like a duty rate that a police officer would get. When they're on duty, there's a special rate for that.
Correct.
I think that's what you're proposing for your staff?
Correct.
And the reason why I think it's better off we do a day rate is because I believe what we should be doing when we do our mass gathering permit, this ought to be included there.
And Rick and I talked about that, we're going to-
So that would be easy for them to say, bang, 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 this is how many days, instead of trying to figure out the hours and all that.
I just want to know what the basis is for the charge. I want to know what it is we're trying to recover.
Yeah.
And to make sure that we're recovering all of our costs.
Yeah, I mean, currently, it was set up-
The treasurer can help you with that.
Well, I have those-
It sounds like you probably already have the numbers, but it would be good for her to look at this, and the two of you can explain anything to the board.
And the whole reason this is coming up last minute is, there was a breakdown in communication between the Renaissance Fair and their request for coverage. They request EMS coverage from us, they're a private entity, either they're for-profit or nonprofit, doesn't matter. And so they have to repay us the rate of us doing the work for them, because they're not the taxpayer, essentially, and so we get compensated.
For any of the events you're going to have over the next month, could you take this fee schedule, or extract from this the fee schedule, and make sure that we send them a notice about, these are the fees, and they're going to be billed at these rates, so they're on notice of that before the event occurs?
Yep.
And then we can follow it up with the bill based on the actual usage.
Yep.
Fair enough?
And then, next year, they should get that ahead of time, like, if they're going to do the mass gathering.
We're going to make it as part of the mass gathering permit.
Yeah, so they know.
When you fill out your mass gathering, everything is already there?
Yeah. We want to have all of our boxes checked, because some mass gatherings don't necessarily need the same coverage that others do.
And I think we, no, I think that's one thing that we have to look at, is our ordinance on what needs it, what don't.
Yes.
Because we're looking at the 250, and this and that.
I'd like to increase the number threshold, and then there's specialty stuff in there that I was talking to both of you guys about today. Like, it's, if you, the Renaissance Fair is one example, they just need any EMT on standby, that's a request that they have. The, like, when they do the truck pulls, or if a concert venue wanted to have pyrotechnics, things like that, that needs to have a different requirement, it has to have an engine on standby with people staffing it, and the vehicles running.
Are there regulations on that, Rick, or is it more judgment by, on your part?
It's off of NFPA, it's not anything, it's a code.
It's prescribed.
Correct.
Okay.
That's all I operate off of, there's no Rick Smith's best feeling, it's all off of NFPA code.
That's great.
Sorry, I was going to say, the other thing we mentioned that we wanted to see was, when you do bill for these, not to put them in for regular payroll, if you can put them at the bottom Renaissance Fair and list them out, because when they make their payment, we're going to pay them out of the same one that the revenue comes in out of, so it can wash.
Correct.
So that it's not coming out of the regular operating budget.
Yep.
We need you to keep that separate.
We're working, I'm working with the treasurer to build out those lines, so they're completely separate. So we have better accounting with that, following my conversation with Tom about that. And then what we'll do is, if we do agree to a special rate, then I create a whole separate form, so that is, that special rate is agreed upon, it's pulled, it's paid the right way, it's not marked incorrectly and all that.
Got it.
I think my concern was with the mass gathering was, like, say, we, now and then, we sign a mass gathering for weddings, okay? And whether or not weddings is going to have to have an ambulance and a fire truck there due to our ordinance, whether or not we-
And that's why we need to increase that number.
We have to increase that number to make sure that stuff like that doesn't happen.
You want to increase or decrease it, it's at 250?
I want to increase the threshold for it to be defined as a mass gathering.
To 500?
500, some stuff says, something says something, 1,000. Let me do some research, get back to you with a better answer that fits our community.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's something we're going to put forward to the town anyways, because it's a lot of this.
Correct. The mass gathering stuff's kind of on a bit of a curve, because a mass gathering for a city is much different than a small community like ours, because you think of the mass gathering as being a threshold of people injected into your community that taxes the services there.
Well, I think the number that, you know, because right now, we're at 250.
Yeah.
Okay.
When that policy was written, that might have been a lot of people to come to town.
Yeah. And so, I mean, five, 600, you know, that turns into a lot of people.
That becomes a lot of people. And that's what you see at the Renaissance Fair, that's what you see at the Acton Agricultural Fair. But, you know, I use Greg as an example, because he's worked with us close on all that stuff. Some of his concerts at Iron Tales, he's pulled mass gathering permits for, and he's had, you know, 150, 200 people. He's got a big space, they're spaced out, it's really not causing a tax on the system that he needs to pull those permits for. And I think that threshold should be adjusted to match. Yeah.
So just one last thing, because, and I hate to even add this, but when we did this originally, so it says utility vehicle with one EMS personnel, $101 an hour. So your EMS personnel right now, based on the new rate, is at 23?
2350 would be the highest rate.
2350, so I'm just wondering if there's actually room already within these rates to set a special one, because that's going to leave 70s?
I think there is, but-
Well, so, I guess I'm trying to figure out how the utility vehicle is at $77 an hour.
It's, those numbers are based off the vehicle having to operate the entire duration of the thing, and the wear and tear on the vehicle, so that, all that is calculated.
I was trying to help you, I was trying to help you to say that you could put more towards salary and less towards the truck.
I think I can, I think for this year, it will not be a financial hardship.
No.
What will happen is, if we did 100 of these a year, I would have to replace vehicles sooner, because they're going to have that higher wear and tear, the engines will have more hours and things like that.
Got it.
Okay.
So, if I have the board's consent, I will work on performing that, getting the account moved over and getting the fee structure to do the overtime rate that we agreed upon, or we talked about, to compensate my people for these special-type events.
So, agree to work on it.
Agree to work on it, yes. I'll come back to another meeting, so we can talk about it.
Well, okay.
So for these events, they'll be at their regular straight time?
Until we agree upon something else.
Okay, gotcha.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Appointments.
Mary Grant Committee, I'll just read you the names, and you can motion to move them off. We've got Kelly Collins, Virginia DeBoer, Dan Kearney, Daniel Crampsett, although he didn't reply to my email saying he wanted to, I took it upon myself to sign him back up, along with his beautiful wife Tammy, and Linda Leck, and Richard Neal. I think you have one other member that Dan hasn't replied, so I just held off on her for now.
I make a motion, we appoint the individuals as read to the Mary Grant Committee.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay.
Send some down just-
Public comment.
I have a question on the parking lot, as being discussed. You said crushed gravel, or any crushed stone, or whatever that was, is that inclusive of blacktop? Or is that totally separate?
No, that's before you put hot top on, that's the material you put before hot top.
It's a base layer.
All right, so the base layer is what you guys are talking about, that you don't need-
We're not doing hot top.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other comment?
I sent him his wife.
Good evening, I thought I'd just update you that the Acton Elementary School summer program is well underway. You may have seen the bus on the road, and we also use a small white van to augment transportation. We have just under 40 students attending, and we're in our second week of a four-week program, Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 12:00. Just wanted to give you that heads up, the kids are doing a great job, and it's like we didn't even, didn't even have June off. They're back and having a great time.
You sat through this whole meeting just to tell us that, that's awesome.
We appreciate it.
She likes to pop in.
Thank you.
Thank you, glad it's going well.
Okay, announcements.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, these department head committee heads. I just wanted to let you guys know that the chipping at the sand shed and the dump has been done. They got 10 and a half loads out of the transfer station, and I believe four loads out of the town shed. And all the, well, most of the, all the leaves I got disposable also.
Very nice.
So, last time we talked about the chipping, we did discuss whether, and I think Will, I think we talked, you and Adam, about that. Are we going to try to haul the brush in one spot from now on? So Adam's doing the same thing?
Yeah, we're talking about it.
There we go.
The transfer station, right?
That's right, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that just makes more sense to say-
Well, just asking, I remember the conversation, I just wanted to show if you guys were actually going to do it.
They are going to be doing that, yep.
Awesome.
So just a heads up.
Thank you.
The, did you mention the generator last week when I was gone?
Uh, no, you mentioned it to me, because Katie mentioned it to me earlier.
The generator that belongs to the town that the Smiths have stored for free for a long time, in safe conditions, has been moved back to town property, so, thank you, Road Commissioner, for removing it from our building that we've stored it in for a long time.
I got a text message on a Saturday, I believe, or something like that, asking where to drop this thing off, and last minute, I said, bring it to the town shed, because it's only place I could really go, so. Do appreciate you guys storing that. Thank you.
Which generator was this, was this the?
Nope, this is really, really old, it was donated. We didn't have a place to store it at the time. One got installed at the school, one got installed at the fire department, the original one maybe. And the third one, we didn't have a home for or a place to store it, and my family offered up a space to store it undercover.
I thought there was only two, so there was a third one.
Yeah.